Back and we're going to be reporting out from closed session. Mr. City Attorney, anything to report out?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. The City Council met in closed session to consider several items in this litigation related to proposed development projects at 312 West Aliso Street, 412 Mallory Way, 107 North Ventura Street, 304 South Montgomery Street, and 510 East Ojai Avenue. Also to consider existing litigation, Simply Ojai v. City of Ojai, and existing litigation, Ojai Bungalows LP v. City of Ojai. The council provided direction of staff and counsel and has reached a tentative settlement agreement, which the counts I will present in the open session for open session consideration and approval is part of item number one regarding the retroactive time extension request for the cottages project 312 West Aliso and the Mallory Way Bungalows project and the other three addresses as listed. So, the settlement agreement reached in tentative form will be discussed in open session momentarily. And no final approval was made. Final approval will be in open session. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. All right, we will adjourn closed session. We will open session. And welcome, everyone, to the OJ City Council Special Meeting, December 18th, 2023. Can we have a quorum? Can we have a roll call, please, Weston?
Yes, Mayor. Mayor Stix.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Francina.
Here.
Councilmember Rule.
Here.
Councilmember Lang.
Here.
Councilmember Whitman.
Here.
Thank you, Weston. Could you say the pledge for us, please, Weston?
Absolutely. Welcome, everyone. Please stand, place your right hand over your heart, ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Weston. And is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second it.
Okay. All right. Well, we will move on to a discussion. There's only one item, and we'll take public comment after, right after I introduce it. It's item number one, consideration of a retroactive time extension for design review permit for several development projects. Mr. City Attorney, anything to?
Yes, I have a brief staff report, then we'll take public comment. So, the council is going to be considering two retroactive time extensions, one for the Cottage Among the Flowers project, which would extend a prior set of approvals that date back to 2007, with several extensions through the years, most recently considered by the Planning Commission in 2019. The project consists of 10 units. There are eight existing units of the cottages. Those eight would be rehabilitated, and two more units would be built. The proposal is to extend that time, extend the existing or past permits for the validity period. Second, the Mallory Way Bungalows project also considered previously approved back in 2012, extensions through the years per state law, last considered by the Planning Commission in 2019, at which extension was recommended. Both of those 2019 Planning Commission approvals were, one was called up for review, the other was appealed to the City Council. The City Council in 2019 directed staff to work with the developer on a development agreement solution to those two projects and the other projects. That resulted in a development agreement that was approved by the City Council about a year ago. That was subjected to referendum. Then, the developer withdrew the referendum and withdrew the request for the project in August of this year, August of '23. So, the council has now set the underlying extension applications for consideration. And it is noted, we're very pleased to report that we've reached tentative agreement on a settlement that will take care of all of the projects and result in significant new deed-restricted affordable housing for the city. So, I'll walk through that agreement. We are finalizing the text as I speak. It covers four projects, and I'll, in part, summarize. The cottages project, the 10 units would be extended, and two more 55-year deed-restricted affordable units would be added, one very low income and one low income. The Montgomery, that's it, cottages is at 312 West Aliso Street. The Montgomery project at 304 South Montgomery would be built with 15 new units, 12 moderate income, 55-year deed restriction, and three low-income, 55-year deed restriction. 510 East Ojai, which was not in the development agreement, is added now, would be 13 units, of which two very low-income, 55-year deed restriction, two low-income, 55-year deed restriction, and one moderate income, 55-year deed restriction. And then, one, two very low, two low, one moderate income for 510 East Ojai, all 55-year deed restrictions. And then, for the Mallory project, all 25 existing bungalows would be preserved and rehabilitated, not demolished. Four of them could be moved on-site, but still preserved. And the rehabilitation would occur only as the existing tenants move out or are offered a unit that meets their existing rent level in another of the projects. The same tenant protection will be provided for cottages. No existing tenant would be required to move out involuntarily unless there is another unit at their current rent level in some of, one of the other projects. So, it protects all existing tenants at cottages and Mallory. And then, their rental unit they move into would be the same rent they pay now, and then subjected to the city's rent stabilization ordinance limiting increases thereafter. Mallory would have 10 deed-restricted affordable units, five very low-income for 55 years, and five moderate income for 55 years. All of the units at Mallory would have to be 500 to 600 square feet in size, so small, equivalent to the size is there now, with similar design materials and character, maintaining the current sort of rural bungalows-type character with the oak trees that exist now preserved to the maximum extent possible. We don't have a precise number of oak trees to be preserved because the site plan is not developed yet, but that'll be worked through with staff, and a maximum of two stories. Yeah, I'm going to cover that. All of that is in contrast to what would be allowed if we did not have a settlement agreement. If we did not have a settlement agreement, Mallory would be 10, the same 10 affordable, but 48 market rate. All of the bungalows could be knocked down and demolished, and it could be three or four stories, or even higher, by state law, without any of the preservation for size and the existing character, and without any of the tenant protections, subject to state law for tenant protections for those who are truly low-income or lower income. The cottages project would be 10 plus 280 use with zero affordable units. Montgomery would be one low-income and one moderate income, instead of three low and 12 moderate. So, 13 more market-rate units, and 510 East Ojai, that would be the same. In total, the settlement as reached provides for 65 new units.
63.
63 new units, of which 31 are affordable units, 18 moderate income, 55-year deed restriction, six low-income, 55-year deed restriction, seven very low-income, 55-year deed restriction, and 25 of the existing Mallory Way bungalows preserved for rehabilitation as tenants leave or are offered an alternative unit at their rent level at one of the other sites. So, only truly 42 new market-rate units. All of the Mallory Way bungalows units kept at the 500, 600 square foot size, no three stories. The other piece is that all of this is in return for putting on the table and allowing the developer to take advantage of an unapproved right-of-way adjacent to the Mallory Way bungalows. That unapproved right-of-way is about 50 feet wide. That would be conveyed to the developer after compliance with the Surplus Land Act and the street right-of-way vacation laws, and would allow the low, spread-out character to be maintained. The developer would be required to build a dirt or decompose granite trail in maintaining the unapproved trail that exists in that right-of-way now. And a last piece on the tenant protections, again, to emphasize, all existing tenants at cottages and Mallory would not have to move out as units rehabilitated unless they are offered a unit at one of the other projects that matches their current rent level, not income level, their current rent level, which would then be subject to the rent stabilization ordinance and generally capping it at 4% per year in increases, or state law, whichever is lower. And a $2,000, up to $2,000 moving allowance for tenants as they are required to move. Last, the developer will apply for the landmark status for the Mallory Way bungalows once, as the project goes through, paired with Mills Act status, which would allow for their continued preservation. Even if this developer sells to a new developer, the landmark status would serve to preserve the Mallory Way bungalows. And last, there's an agreed-upon, above the city's ordinance requirement for local preference, for local Ojai residents, to be first preference for tenants in any of the projects, any of these units. And the World University site is not a part, as that, the developer is in consultations with another developer to sell that separately. So, the four sites are cottages, among the flowers, Mallory Way bungalows, Montgomery Street Affordable Housing, and 510 East Ojai, with a net of 31 new 55-year deed-restricted affordable units. Oh. And lastly, the, lastly, the project, together with the Cabrillo project, as approved last week, would meet the city's RENA in full. RENA is the Regional Housing Needs Allocation. It's a state requirement that the city zone for a certain amount of affordable housing. Our requirement is to zone over the next eight years and eventually build, or convince developers to build, 13 very low-income units, nine low-income, 10 moderate income, and 21 above moderate. And with the Cabrillo project plus this project, we've met that with 15 very low-income units, 47 low-income units, 18 moderate-income units, and then 43 standard above-moderate units, plus the 25 smaller preserved Mallory Way bungalows. Staffs available for any questions. The mechanics of this would be to approve the time extension for the cottages, for those 10 units, subject to the settlement agreement being executed. If the settlement agreement is not executed, the approval is void. And to take no action on the Mallory Way time extension because their developer will apply for a different project, for the modified project.
What's modified through the settlement agreement?
As modified through the settlement agreement, and then to approve the settlement agreement. And we have resolutions prepared to that effect that we'll pass out now.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you, Sunny.
We're available for any questions. And I must note, must give a great thanks to my colleague, Sunny Sultani, with the law firm, Elshon Winter, managing partner, right? Managing partner there. And a very great help is the city's special housing council to bring this deal to fruition. Thank you, council.
You two make a great team. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any questions from council? Nope. Okay, we'll go ahead and move on to public comment. First, we have Tara Jeffrey, then Anita Hendricks, and then Bill Miley. And just a reminder, if we could keep quiet and, while our people are talking, thank you.
I'm sorry, I'm a little shell-shocked. So, I'm gonna, I'm gonna refrain from making a comment right now. Good work, but I need to digest all this. It's a lot of change. So, thank you.
Thank you, Tara. Next, we have Anita Hendricks, then Bill Miley, and then Tom Francis.
It's a packet. Keep it together.
Okay. Everything went, it was so quickly presented that I really couldn't get all of the changes. My impression was, is if the, I'm going to go back to where I was before all of this because I'm a little overwhelmed with it, but if they were allowed to use expired permits, the California impact would, there would be no CEQA requirement, and the housing element to displace low-income housing for the people who move would not be in effect. That's the 2013. I don't know enough about this. I'm really not clear. Did you guys, is this an agreement that was presented by the attorneys of the city and the attorneys from Becker? Is that what this is that you have here, and they would do it if it is passed? Okay. I have a problem with, we talk about moderate how, income, income. Moderate income for, is 146,700, according to the county, or, for one person, or for our, in our housing element, there was a mention of 86,450 for one person. Now, I don't know if the people in the cottages amongst the flowers can afford that. I really think that we need to expand very low, extremely low, because what happens is when we talk about moderate income, or affordable housing includes moderate income, which means the only thing that isn't included is market rate. So, when you're doing moderate income, it is pretty high compared to what most, what we consider low, extremely low. Extremely low is 43,000 a year. Very low is 71,750, or in our housing element, extremely low is 27,900. In the project that was proposed over, that new project, a couple would have to both work full-time to be able to afford a studio over there, and they still would not have enough money to afford it. So, when we talk about moderate income, there's a whole strata of low and extremely low that cannot afford affordable housing. We need to focus on that. It's too easy to take that group and serve as a large group. What you're saying, what you came up with, I don't fully understand. It's kind of all new to me and hitting me. It has an appealing sound to it, but it's hard for me to really grok it on such a short, you know, all of a sudden, here it is, you know, and well, I really don't have the time to digest it. The historic, I'm just concerned, is there any slipperiness to this? Could you all approve it? And then somehow or other, there could be some maneuvers that would, you know, extract, that, you know, would be.
Thank you, Anita.
Thank you.
Next, we have Bill Miley, then Tom Francis, and then Carolyn Goldwasser.
And please mute microphones when not in use.
Good evening. Wow, what a change. My first sentence of my old message was, this administrative memo is confusing. Now, the new one is interesting, but boy, I had trouble writing everything down when we got to Mallory Way. When Matthew was doing this, I kind of lost the numbers. So, it seems to me that the request for a design review extension has been withdrawn. Is that right?
I can answer questions if the council would like. So, no, it is not withdrawn for cottages. It would be withdrawn for Mallory and modified, for a modified project for Mallory. But cottages would be extended, plus two more low, very low and a low-income unit on top.
So, what I have here is actually irrelevant. This is the key changes I see. There's no World University in this. Is that right?
Yes, World University is taken out.
Okay. The bungalows are being saved. They're going to be under historic preservation. The tenants would not be evicted. They would be basically guaranteed a spot. And I heard something like, equivalent to the rent they're paying now. I don't know how long though. The water requirement, and I know there were comments that went to the City Council in email, and it's listed in comments on the agenda. What is missing here is that they have allocations now for 25 at Mallory and 10 at the cottages. So, they only need a few more, and that needs to be considered when there's the issue of how much water, new water they're going to use. Another key issue which never gets included, because it could be, but it's not, there's no outside money coming into this project or these projects. Cabrillo Development Corporation has probably over $35 million coming from the state of California through tax and bonds. The Becker project has none. It's all based on what they are going to get from their rent. They don't talk about that. One key factor, and it was mentioned in one of the comments that are on your agenda, is this income survey. The original income survey was done in 19, 2019. The new survey by somebody was done in 2022. I basically support this. I'm confused by some of the numbers. I want to see them in writing.
Thank you, Bill.
I think that the City of Ojai will benefit if they can work something out where the tenants are saved.
Thank you, Bill. Time's up. Next, we have Tom Francis, then Carolyn Goldwasser, and then Teal Rowe.
Mayor, may I? May I? Will you be addressing the income, the difference, how the income is determined? Do you acknowledge?
I can address that now if the council would like briefly before Mr. Francis speaks. The deal as proposed does not require the city to know the details of the incomes of the tenants, because all existing tenants would be entitled to keep their current rent for as long as is allowed under the state law and the city's ordinances. So, what that means is they stay in their unit at cottages or at Mallory until it's time for the developer who wants to rehab their unit can only do so if they offer them another unit at one of the other sites, whether cottages, another part of cottages, or Mallory or Montgomery, one of the other sites, at the same rent that they're currently paying, and then increases thereafter only as allowed under the rent stabilization ordinance and the State Tenant Protection Act. So, to do, this structure allows the city to not have to get into the business of trying to understand what their incomes are, because it's covered through capping their current rent. The side effect that benefits that is that for tenants whose income may be uncertain, or perhaps they're a moderate-income person and not a very low-income or a low-income person, they would still be able to keep whatever rent they have now. So, would keep all current rents either at that unit or another unit somewhere in the project, provided they meet the terms of the lease, obviously. If you don't pay your rent, then that's different.
Yeah. Thank you. I think that's a great clarification. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, and council members for your service tonight. I guess I have a couple of questions to start with, because I'm, you know, I had comments prepared, which, some of which may no longer apply, but, so, one question is, how many units total with all the projects? Second question is, how many of those units are market rate?
So, 98 total units.
63.
63 new units, 98 counted on the existing units. 63 new units, 31 of those affordable.
Can you just tell me the market rate number?
The market rate number is 42 truly market rate, plus the 25 Mallory Way bungalows rehabilitation.
So, that's 67 market rate units?
Let me do the math for a minute. Sorry.
Can we stop the clock while we're doing math here?
Well, that doesn't count the existing units.
Make sure your, is her mic on?
James, can you stop the clock and start it again at 2:30?
It's like an NFL game.
Is the question, how many new market rate units?
There's 98 units total in the total project, right?
Yeah, the net effect will be 98 units total at the end.
All said and done, 98 units.
Right.
How many are market rate out of the 98?
42.
42.
42 fully unrestricted market rate units.
Okay. And then the other 25 that you were mentioning is what?
25 Mallory Way bungalows units will be having that, the tenant protection I just described for the current tenants.
Okay, and that just, and then they go to market rate after the tenant moves?
Correct.
Okay, so those are.
Never the tenant chooses to move.
Eventually, we end up with 67 market rate units.
42 market rate units and the 25 protected with the current tenants.
But, once the tenants leave, do they roll over to market rate, or do they stay at that rent, or what?
They'll be whatever the market rate is at that time.
Okay.
Function, taking into account that they're kept small.
Eventually, all these people are going to pass on, so eventually, it becomes a 67 market rate units.
I'm sorry, I have to clarify this. I'm Sunny Sultani. I'm the special housing council. Thank you. Yes, can you? Yes. So, there's going to be 63 new units. Out of the 63 new units, 31 are committed affordable. So, 63 minus 31 equals, there is 32 market rate units that are, new market rate units that are coming. Is that?
Yeah, 32 new market rate units.
Yes.
I don't really care if they're new or old. I just want to know how many market rate.
Because, is that right?
Because the difference is the cottages, 10 existing market rate units. That's the difference.
It goes up to 42.
If you add the 10 cottages existing units.
But, he's only asking about Mallory, I think.
No, he's not. He's asking.
Out of the total, 98.
He's asking about everything.
Market rate.
So, then you add the 10. Okay, I see what you're saying.
So, is it 42?
42.
Plus 25.
42 truly market rate units, plus the 25.
Eventually, when people move, pass on or whatever they do, so it's 67, the ultimate result, some years from now, is 67 market rate units.
At whichever time the tenants have all left Mallory.
Right. Okay.
Versus 81 market rate units if there's no deal.
Okay.
That's the key comparison.
Okay. So, all right. Okay, so I had some comments prepared. I think I'm still going to read them, because I think they, even if it's just for future process purposes, you know, maybe they'll apply, I don't know. So, considering that there were multiple city hearings where hundreds of community members expressed opposition to four of these projects, and that there was a successful referendum petition process, it is disappointing to many in the community that the council apparently has directed staff to engage in settlement negotiations with the developers without offering the community a chance to weigh in on the pros and cons of doing so, or at a minimum, at least disclosing that this was going to occur. Some in our community that lived through the Comas fire are concerned about our ability to safely evacuate during the next fire or other natural disaster should many residents and workers need to exit our valley quickly. The council just approved a 50-unit low and very low-income housing project brought forward by nonprofit housing experts Cabrillo Economic Development Corporation. I applaud the council for supporting a project that includes homes with rents that are all within reach of regular working and retired people. I'm concerned that approving several additional housing developments absent thorough study of our valley's disaster evacuation infrastructure could increase risk of injury or death during a fire or other natural disaster due to overcrowding and grid lack of evacuation routes. The public was not made aware of any substantial activity on these proposed projects until last Friday evening. It is unreasonable for the council to expect council, community members to be able to review and prepare comments on five projects over a period of three days, two of which are on a weekend during the holidays. In an effort to allow members of the public, it's going to just take another 10 seconds.
Yeah, fine.
Okay, in an effort to allow members of the public adequate time to review the information provided and enough lead time scheduled, time, enough lead time to schedule time in their calendars to attend council meetings, I respectfully request that council not take any further action on any of these proposed projects until the latter half of January. I also request that council direct staff to cease settlement negotiations until the public has a right to define on how much staff resources should be invested into settlement negotiations versus potential legal avenues to deny one or more of the projects. In addition, please allow adequate time between each hearing for community members to thoroughly review each proposal. So, I'm a little confused. Are you guys actually approving this tonight? All of it, it's done?
Excuse me, time, I think time is up.
Who's up?
Mr. City Attorney, could you answer that question? We'll be answered. Councilmember Rule, I got it. Do you want to answer that question?
Yes.
Actually, I was asking the whole council, not you.
Yeah. If the council is comfortable with it, the council would be approving a processing agreement, which is the settlement agreement. It would provide for future appropriate process to review the site plan for the revised modified Mallory project, along with its final site plans for Montgomery and 510 East Ojai. To there be a future process on the site plan, and it reserves discretion to the council at that future point. Mindful, however, there are provisions if the council were not to approve the projects, then they'd be able to pursue under the default state law projects.
Thank you, Matt. Okay, next, we have Carolyn Goldwasser, and then Teal Rowe, and then Anita Cram.
Hello, my name is Carolyn Goldwasser, and I live at 302 North Signal Street at the corner of Aliso. I have walked by these projects, most of them, at least Mallory Way and Cottage of the Flowers. And what I would like to speak about is the environmental impacts of some of these things on the, on the earth, the trees, the birds that live in the trees, and the squirrels, and the raccoons, and all the wildlife and whatnot. Also, the water that runs down the roots of the grown trees. It takes decades for trees to get to be big, and they have extensive root systems, and when it does rain, the water runs down the roots and replenishes the aquifer and helps the understory bushes stay green and living, which helps prevent so much fire problems in our drought, which seems to be getting worse, which maybe wasn't quite incorporated into the planning 10 years ago, or whatever, whenever this was done. The environmental impact of some of those trees may The environmental impact of some of those trees maybe being taken and replaced, I was told, with four-foot, four-foot boxes, trees with four-foot boxes, this is pretty big roots, it's nothing like the roots of a grown tree. It takes a long time for even a big tree in a big box to get big. So, this is something that I would urge you to work on with these people, the trees, the tree issue. And the other thing about environment is that when you offer somebody living in the cottages another place at one of these other places, an equal rent, that is a different environment. They don't know their neighbors. If they don't have a car, walking to the library is no longer a real good option. If you live at Aliso right now, cottages for the flowers, you can use it if you're able to walk. The library is two blocks away, and West Ridge is two blocks away. But if you're then transferred over to somewhere else, one of these other sites like Mallory Way, which is pretty far away from West Ridge or shopping or whatever, if you don't have a car, this is another environmental impact. The goal, I would think, for the future is to have more people walking, bicycling, pedestrian-friendly, and riding the trolley to get to places and knowing their neighbors. So when you're moving people around, it isn't just about money, it's about the environment and the future of our lovely city with trees and, trees and birds and raccoons and all that stuff. It's important to be aware and, and consider this, and it sounded like there's some leeway for the future to be, the site plan and things like that, to be talking to people who are doing the rebuilding or whatever, that this is environment, and it's important to our, our beautiful city. Thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn. Next, we have Teal Rowe, then Anita Cram, and then Sabrina Venskis.
Good evening, council and staff. Love the rehab of Mallory Way, it's great. And I'm really, all of this is way, way, way over my head, and I really wonder what happened with the referendum and the, there's, like, there's a switch thing that goes on, and I know it's the deal and the way it's going on, but the referendum, every signature on that referendum has value, and the accountability to those signatures, I, I don't, I would appreciate somebody to speak to that, to let everybody know what's going on, because it's very complicated. I'm with Tom Francis with the evacuation parts of, especially on the, the heels of the fifty units at Cabrillo, it's like, okay, when we're coughing in our cars waiting to get out of the valley, this will be thought of in my mind. I'm also agreeing with Carolyn, talking about the SEQA issues, and also, I'd like to add about the EMFs on the Montgomery site, that it seems like that would be just unbelievable to live next to that electrical company, whatever it is. And, yeah, that's the end of my comment, and thank you, I know it's a lot, I, I don't even know what to say. So, thank you for your service, and it's just, I don't even know what to say. Thanks.
Thank you, Teal. Next, we have Anita Cram, then Sabrina Venskis, and then Nora Harold.
Hello. Well, I thank you all for your negotiations and some improvements. I'm angry right now. I'm really angry that you sat in that room for an hour, we all sat out here, then you come out and you drop this big plan on us that we have no way to be able to interpret it, and you're set to vote on it tonight? Okay, so I'm going on here with what I had prepared in a pissed mood. So page two of the staff report tonight says, open quote, "The project applicant intends to keep the exterior cottages among the flowers, exterior of the existing dwelling units unchanged except for some paint and necessary minor repairs, a falsification that went all the way back to October of 2022." So what, are they not tearing down walls anymore on cottages? We have no clue. Community doesn't know what's going on after you guys have done all those closed-door negotiations, and we're expected to listen to a twenty-minute verbal report? Don't vote on it tonight. I'm pissed, I'm telling you right now. What about SEQA? What about the wildlife corridor status of cottages among the flowers? What about endangered, threatened, sensitive species? I have casual observations of a lot of wildlife that occurs there, so we're just throwing all that out the window? We're throwing our integrity as a community out the window? How can you do this to us? I, you know, I can't even read my notes. So, okay, okay, are they freezing our rent at what it is right now? Is that what you're saying? You know, I live at the cottages, they're separate parcels. That developer can raise our rent ten percent each year, force us all out by raising the rent too much, and then it's moot on us needing replacement housing. I'm walking away. You guys, I am so disappointed in this. You need to put this all out in documentation, write it out, let the community review what is happening before you approve it. That's malpractice if you do not.
Thank you, Anita. Next, we have Sabrina Venskis, then Nora Harold, and then Madeline, I'm not sure, H.
Hi, Sabrina Venskis, representing Simply Ojai tonight. Anita's a friend of mine, but I'm gonna change the tone just a little bit. Wow, what a difference a council makes. I mean, the last council said that was the best deal they could get. This is like phenomenally better. And I think, I just wanna say thank you to the team here. I think it takes a team, it takes a village. So thank you, I think it's on the right path. I don't think that it is necessarily the final, and we have a lot of questions. I do as an attorney on behalf of my client, Simply Ojai. I think that I'm a little confused about the claim that Mallory cottages could be demolished because my understanding is under the law, that's not the case, and that they could do by right forty-eight market, or forty-eight units. And so I, I have some questions, and as a land use and environmental attorney, I'd like the ability to evaluate and analyze this. I would like, I would like to see a project that Simply Ojai could support, but we just don't know. And so, again, it sounds really good, and I really appreciate the work that's been put into it. I understand some of the community members' frustration with not being brought into the fold a little bit sooner and to, to understand what the terms are, but certainly, this has been, this is a great team, they're getting miles better than what that, that former council got. So, thank you. And the request is, on behalf of Simply Ojai, that you don't approve any settlement agreement tonight. Let's take a look, devil's in the details, and, and I think that, I think that if it's a really good deal, the community can get behind it. And so, I, I think this is a great opportunity to bring the community together to support a project that everybody, everybody agrees to and everybody, everybody likes. It sounds like you're pretty close to that. Thank you.
Thank you, Sabrina. Next, we have Nora Harold, then Madeline H., and then Spencer Aston.
Hi, everyone, Nora Harold, Miners Oaks. First, I really wanna thank you all for getting so much more than what I've been gotten before. Like, what a negotiation, thank you, thank you. Thank you for making affordable housing for people who really need it a priority. Thank you. This does seem very fast, right? I tried to keep track of all of the information that Matthew gave, and it was hard to keep up because, but I think it's all fast, it's very fast for you all as well, correct? This is all, this happened tonight, yes, in that closed session? So, if it does not negatively affect the community in any way, to hold a vote, please hold. So there can be full community response, more questions, better understanding. That, that would be my one request, if, if it, if it can be done. But I don't know if you are able to do that, it seemed to me that, well, it seemed to me like this was like a hard line. So I guess I'm also speaking to the other lawyer on the other side, who is also a part of this community because these buildings are in this community, and the community needs to get on board. So to the Becker lawyers, it behooves you to have the community's support. It behooves you to have the community's support. So if you can agree to put a pin in this, come back to it in January and have your vote at that point, I think the entire community will benefit. Thank you.
Thank you, Nora. Next, we have Madeline. Spencer Aston then, and Paul Magulis.
Madeline's my partner, she stepped out. But just in lieu of the new information, I'm not gonna speak too much this evening, but would greatly appreciate if we didn't come to final approval on anything this evening. Give the community time to process and vote on this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have Spencer Aston, then Paul Magulis, and then-
Spencer.
What?
That was Spencer.
Oh, I'm sorry, Spencer. Oops.
That was Spencer.
Never mind. We have Paul, and then we have Mirta Karamitsu, and then Scott McHenry.
Hi, Paul.
Hi. So, well, congratulations on moving together. That is amazing. Feels like there's some new energy here. But we don't want to go too fast. We don't want to make mistakes. I don't know how many hours it took you to bring this plan together, but, how much was it? A lot of hours?
Yeah. A lot, many, many.
Weeks? Hmm, no. Congratulations, yeah, that's great.
Yeah, a lot, a lot, a lot. We all need a nap.
Yeah. Yeah, it's amazing. Well, let's, let's see it. Let's see the, what, all the work you've done. Let's not just race through and commit to it so fast. Yeah, I'm sure it's amazing work, but, yeah, the devil is in the details, right? And we do need to find those little things which can make a difference to everyone, the low-income people, the builders, the, everyone, the community. So, yeah, let's not rush it.
Thank you, Paul. Next, we have Mirta Karamitsu, then Scott McHenry, and then Julia Weisman.
Hi, congratulations for all the work you're doing, and thank you. I, I feel the same thing, I feel, I mean, I wasn't expecting all this new information, and I just-
Microphone, please.
Need more time to digest, to digest it and consider it all this before I can clearly say that I, I support this or not. I need more time, I think it, it would be a rush for the city council members to, to vote right away. Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Thank you, Mirta.
May I, may I just, before we get any more comments about rushing this, I think it's really important for your community to understand that there's a new sta, oh, sorry, it's on.
It seems like all the mics are really quiet tonight, so it's funny.
Oh, sorry, is this better? I'm usually, I'm usually being told I'm too loud and I need to tone it down, so, thank you. I, I think it's really important for the community to understand why coming up with the constructs of the settlement agreement before the end of the year is a critical component to the council members, and I think the community needs to understand that there is a new legislation that takes effect January first that would allow the developer, as a matter of right under density bonus laws, to come in, file an application on Mallory that would give them up to fifty-eight new units, that would allow them to go up to three to four stories, that would allow them to, as long as they replace, have a replacement place for, or a replacement rental unit for the current residents, it would allow them to knock down the bungalows and rebuild it like an apartment complex or anything like that, they could cut down all of the oak trees, and they could have a very irresponsible development that would not be consistent with this community and the beautiful city that you have. I, I believe it's critical for them to understand that the council has tried very hard to bring the developer to the table, to have the developer give the community a responsible development, and they pushed hard to get these beautiful units earmarked as a landmark, which the developer has now agreed to, which is something, is our understanding, that that was a critical component to the community. So the reason, and, and there's been hours and hours of meetings and discussions and back and forth, and the developers' lawyers are here, buyers remorse by the developer at some point, and then coming back to the table and trying to do the responsible thing, and there's been a lot of back and forth, but it's really important for your residents to understand the reason it's happening quickly, and tonight, if it's continued, it could jeopardize a deal that saves the bungalows and saves the nature and the feel of this beautiful development, that then you lose the opportunity to have it be a historic landmark and all of the tenant protections. So I just wanted to clarify that, because I think it's really important, because the council actually talked about having workshops and having everybody participate, and the timing doesn't allow for that right now. However, there's gonna be, each parts of these developments, the components of the settlement, there's gonna be further hearings, and there's gonna be an opportunity for everybody to see it. I will make myself personally available for anybody that wants to come and sit down with me and review the settlement agreement. This is a solid settlement agreement that protects your community, protects the nature of what's being presented, and I would not advise the client to lose that opportunity because what can happen January first, trust me, I don't think the residents are gonna like it. So I, I just wanna clarify that, and I wanna commit to all of you, if anybody wants to come meet with me, I have a copy of the settlement agreement that we're trying to finalize, because again, this council is so careful that they wanted to add a last-minute provision that requires the developer to comply with going through the landmark application and make sure that forever we can protect the bungalows, and it's never gonna be an issue again. So, and the cottages would have to have the relocation benefit. So I'm, I'm available to meet with anybody, go over the terms of the settlement agreement, answer any questions, and so I wanted to offer that. I can meet you after the meeting, give my phone number to you, and, and we can take it from there. Okay? Sorry, I thought that was important.
Thank you, Sunny. Next, we have Scott McHenry, then Julia Weisman, and then Maddie Gadzloey.
Hello, all. Before you start my time, though, can I ask for a clarification about what it is about January first, the changes in the law? I didn't hear you say anything about that.
It's, it's really unfortunate. So my, before I tell you that, I just wanna say, my law firm is one of the biggest advocates to preserve local control over these housing issues. We, we are the law firm that brought the coalition of the cities that filed the SB nine lawsuit challenge against the state of California, which I, I think we're about to prevail on the judge ticket under submission for three months, and they have actually continued it and asked for more briefing from the state on these issues. And, and the lawsuit was about the irresponsible way the state is handling these housing laws. If the goal is affordable housing, then their stated objectives in all of their legislative history says we wanna preserve affordable housing, then your laws should be clear and mandate that. However, unfortunately for all of us, not just your community, my community is affected too, they just passed these laws in a wholesale fashion without looking at the needs of local control. And so the new law that they have just passed that's gonna take effect January one will allow density bonuses that applicable to the Mallory project could give them fifty-eight new units. There's no restriction on height, it could go up to three to four stories, as long as, yes, they still have to- As long as, yes, they still have to comply with, uh, providing, replacing affordable units that they're, uh, getting rid of, but they could replace those in, in any way or fashion they would want in their new project. It wouldn't have to be in a way of preserving the bungalows and keeping them as a historic site and, you know, creating, uh, a non-dense-looking development where they preserve oak trees. So, you know, it's, it's a wholesale approach the state is taking. They just want the numbers, that's all they care about. So the fact that through extensive negotiations, the council has gotten the developer to come to this realization that they want to do a development that's responsible for the community and they're willing to make the concessions that they're making and they're giving up a lot of their state rights under this settlement agreement to bring it together, I think the council needs to be congratulated for their hard work and putting their heart and soul into this. And for everyone that's saying that the referendum mean nothing, yeah, the referendum meant a lot. This is a much better deal than the development agreement was and you're preserving the character and nature of your, uh, community. So kudos to anybody that did that because obviously, um, it was hurt by the developer too. The developer came to the table and gave up a lot to get this deal going.
Okay, thank you. That was somewhat of an answer and a lot of, uh, more time than I'll get to say what I wanted to, but thank you, thank you. And thanks for, you know, everybody putting in your time right here before Christmas on a Monday. We got this notification at, what, the end of Friday? I didn't know about it till yesterday, um, that it wasn't a Tuesday meeting like it should be typically, so the, the community's more aware. Um, I think the community should still have time to weigh in. And something else changes in January first is the, uh, and it doesn't apply to me, probably most of the people in the room. The, um, do you call that the minimum wage? Goes up to sixteen whole dollars an hour before taxes. Now, if you work forty hours a week, fifty weeks a year, that brings you up to about thirty, thirty-five thousand after taxes, I can't say exactly. You know, those are numbers that are real for the young that are in this community that are gonna need a place to live when they move out of their homes and... I know a lot of the older folks that live in the cottages. A lot of them are on fixed income, no income, checks that barely keep them going. The landlord that we're calling the, the developer is, is selectively ignoring maintenance on the structures that, myself included, rent. I've worked in historic restoration since way too long. I, I suffer a little mesothelioma. I have, um, a lot of anger about some of the, the lack of, uh, care about certain things when it comes to, to the industries that are modern construction as well. And what we're talking about is a watershed where there's a, a huge amount of wildlife, seasonal migratory birds that need places to go that have chosen to come through that area. And I'm a avid advocate for animals even though I work in a toxic industry. I think that what has been done in the Arbolata is amazing. I worked to help restore the Riding Club compound for the owners that Edward Libby had designed by Wallace Neff back in the early twenties, with asbestos glazing putty, um, removal, not replacing, but using something more environmental. But, you know, we, we look out for the buildings more than we look out for the people in this town sometimes too. And I, I love historic architecture. I also think that it was visionary, whether it was intended to be or not, by the designer of the cottages among the flowers, to allow all the land to still be permeable, transpiration permeating, you know, into the air and the atmosphere. All the trees are very healthy back there for the most part. There are aging oak trees that fall. But for the most part, I think it's doing better overall during the drought. It stayed cooler during the drought. There's a lot of wonderful things that can't be done today that I'd say are visionary. Like I say, whether it was intended or not by the, the people who designed. I don't know the architect's name in particular, but I do like the character of those structures. I'm glad they'll be preserved. But I, I'm certain I wouldn't be able to afford the rent. I don't like renting anyway, but that's what I do. I had a lot to say and, you know, I'm not following my notes, but, um, I'm worried about the pollution of the water table because I know what they've already done. This, this developer uses contractors that don't do environmental protection.
Thank you, Scott.
Basics.
Next we have Julia Weisman, then Maddie, one sec, Maddie Gadslowey and then Katrina Reischmidt.
I just wanna say, Scott, Scott, can you hear me? If you, provide us in writing with any of the issues you currently have, especially pollution of the water table. Those things can still be addressed. So, you know, please do, you know, provide it or call me or I'll meet with you, whatever, because that's very important, what you just brought up. Thank you.
I almost didn't speak tonight, but I, I watched a lot of, a lot go down in the last couple of years on the, the rent ovation that occurred right next to me.
Okay, yeah. Put it in writing and send it to us.
Thank you, Scott. Uh, Julia Weisman.
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you so much. I'm so optimistic. Um, I've always been here for the residents, so, um, you know, they have their reservations, so I'm not gonna say too much. I just wanna say, thank you.
Thank you, Jules. Uh, next we have Maddie Gadslowey. Is that it?
Oh.
Gadspie, I'm sorry.
I don't think I'm gonna be able to put my words together either because I'm amazed and, um, yeah, I am so amazed by what I'm hearing tonight, particularly the landmarking of Mallory and the protection of the existing character and cottages, what will be developed as well as the tenant protections. Um, I do wanna comment that, I live at Mallory actually right now and my daughter lives at cottages. The rents are already going up because they aren't protected, currently protected. So when someone moves out, those rents are getting raised, even though there's really no heat or cooling in those units. It's getting raised to the maximum people will pay. So there's a unit maybe seven, eight hundred square feet going for twenty-nine hundred right now. So they aren't protected now. So having more affordable housing in this agreement is also really important. So thank you.
Thank you, Maddie. Uh, next Katrina Reischmidt and then Peggy Lacerre and then Fran.
Hi, I'm Katrina Schmidt. I live right across the street from the cottage, or from Mallory Way. I am very, I'm a card-carrying member of the National Trust for Historic Preservation. So I am very excited about this settlement agreement. I think it's wonderful. I think, uh, landmarking and the Mills Act is gonna be perfect for, uh, Mallory Way, uh, the bungalows. I'm just so impressed that you got that, uh, taken care of. Uh, just one concern about the new law that goes into place. What, um, is there anything that, um, would prohibit the landowner from just doing the settlement agreement, twenty-five units, and then coming back in the new year and doing the additional units by right?
Absolutely. The settlement agreement would prevent, prevent that. So if they breach that settlement agreement and they come back with an application to try to comply or impose the s- s- state law and the city says no and they wanna go sue the city for violation of the Housing Accountability Act, essentially the court will throw out their case and they will say, "But you settled and you knew that this is coming and, and you've settled with the city and these are the constructs of the application that you have agreed to." So all, so the state laws as a matter of right, they only exist unless the developer, through some sort of contractual agreement, gives up portions of those rights.
Okay. Um, and the other concern I had of the, uh, the current right-of-way is very actively used by wildlife, by the way. Um, our local mountain lion comes often and, um, by people and dogs too. So I'm wondering if that will be dedicated open to the public forever?
Yes.
Because it, it is used quite a bit.
Yes.
So those, those are my just two questions that I have, but I am really excited and I encourage you to, um, approve this settlement agreement. I, I think it's wonderful.
Thank you, Katrina. Uh, next we have Peggy Lacerre and then Fran.
That's a good point. I hadn't planned on speaking tonight. I was just here to support someone else. I'm really surprised by the progress that has been made. I think, um, I really appreciate the effort to make this a historic preservation site. It sounds really good, all of the affordable and X number of low income and X number of median income. And I don't know what that means to someone who's making beds at the Ojai Valley Inn. I don't know what it means to someone who's stocking shelves at Westridge. This is a service economy. It's a service economy. It's a tourist economy and that means that we have service workers and those service workers are making approximately fifteen dollars an hour. They're making six hundred dollars a week if they work forty hours a week. They're not taking that home because they're being taxed to the tune of about twenty percent. And so imagine that you are that person making beds at the Ojai Valley Inn and tell me what's affordable. Tell me what's median income, what's low income. Take the document that was sped read to us and put it in terms that those people can understand. I think that's critically important. We don't have, uh, affordable housing laws that are yoked to the reality of the econ- the local economies and the income that those workers are making. And I don't know what you can do and I understand that there's, you know, uh, an urgency to doing this so that we don't lose the opportunity that's been created here. I, I'm appreciative of that. And I think we still have to take a beat. I think, you know, the Becker Group and Vim and whoever else is involved, their lawyers, if, if they could be, um, implored to give us another month so that this can be interpreted for the public, the public can understand it, we can understand what the environmental impact is going to be. And I'm not, I don't know whether it's feasible to have a full-scale environmental impact report done, but people who know far more than me should be giving this a little bit more than a cursory look and seeing i- what is going to be impacted. Most importantly, I mean, all the talk about it being affordable, the labels are, they're meaningless. The labels do not mean anything to the people that are working here. So please put it in terms that they understand.
Thank you, Peggy. Uh, next we have Fran.
Hello. So I live at Mallory Wake cabins, I think some of you know that. I'm super happy that the, they will be landmarked with this agreement. I do have a question about the cottages though. How come the cottages amongst the flowers aren't included in that landmarking? But, and if you all vote on it tonight, would it be possible to somehow get the cottages also landmarked because they also are historic? I think they're even more historical than Mallory is and they're quite beautiful. But if you all vote tonight, which I ca- I'm wavering towards that because of that January first law, are there, will there be ways to amend and tweak and add little things like that in the future if you vote yes on it tonight? So that would be my concern because I do also agree with everyone that's saying it does need a little bit more time. But then I get like ajuda when I think of that January first law that could come into effect. Um, but anyways, thank you so much. I feel a little bit more relieved tonight that I will still have a roof over my head and won't be, um, worrying about being evicted anytime soon. So thank you for that very much. Thanks.
Thank you, Fran. Sunny and Matt, would you be able to address that just in terms of the tweaking and the timetable? No?
Yeah, the agreement would be the agreement. Any agree- modifications as agreed could be made, but the city would lack unilateral power to make changes.
Okay, thank you. Um, we did, council, we had a request from, um, Anita Hendricks to, to make another comment as, um... Are you okay with that?
I don't think she used her entire three minutes, so I'd be happy for her to u- use the remainder of it.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you very much.
This time constraint really, makes it really difficult to, um, really be able to fully consider this. And I would like you to at least, if you can't wait till next year, postpone your decision to like December thirtieth. Have another meeting so that we can really look into this. There are maybe some loopholes and things that we're just not picking up because it's happening, happening so hastily. I, you know, I, I just think we really need more time. Thank you.
Thank you, Anita. Any comments online, Weston?
Zoom participants, if you would like to raise your hand for comment on our one agenda item tonight, please raise your hand now. Give one last call. No raised hands, Mayor. We'll move on.
Okay, thank you, Weston. All right, we'll move on to discussion. Who would like to begin?
May I? I would like to make a suggestion if Sunny is willing, now that we've had this hearing. Can you review what Matt said at the beginning of the meeting, but perhaps go a little slower, clarify and address some of the concerns that have been raised so that we can make this as clear as possible for our wonderful audience? Yeah.
I did a little bit better. Uh, while we were having the dialogue, we had a chart that staff's gonna put up, is going to put up, so then you can see it.
Yeah, James, if you could put it up.
Loading now.
Can I do a point of order? I just wanted you to know there's nobody on Zoom. My daughter's at home listening and she said she can't get through to make a question. Thank you, Maddie.
We, we have participants on Zoom now.
Should we go, go back to Zoom?
I, I think the most, oh, we have to go back to Zoom?
I don't know.
No, okay.
No, okay.
I think the most important thing that we need to focus on, and I know there's a lot of history here, but I don't, I don't wanna go back to the history because what, what the community should be focused on is if there is no agreement, what can the developer do on the various sites as a matter of law, law under state law? That if the city council tries to regulate them, HCD would probably come and slap them on the head and say, "You can't do it." And another thing the community needs to understand is HCD now has an enforcement agency component to it. It's no longer an agency that comes out and gives, you know, land use planning guidance and, and they're actually going around enforcing some of these issues. So I think this is the most critical thing and then I'll go over, uh, councilwoman, the, the, each project. But let's start here. Under state law, um...
Thank you.
Sorry. So under, a- a- and maybe, I mean, I, I know we told, uh, Lucas just to put this part up, but maybe it made sense to put all of it up now that I'm looking at it. But, um, is that too much to ask, Lucas? I, how can I sc- so James, can you scroll up, please? Let's just start from the beginning now that everybody's had a chance to. No, well, no. Oh, that's good. No, no, that's good. So on cottages, if they were to proceed by right, it would be ten, um, market rate units and they could do two market rate ADUs. They have agreed to make the two ADUs, um, or make two of the units affordable, one at low and one at very low income. So there's a net of four new units as compared to the existing structure, but tho- two of those will be affordable, which under state law, they wouldn't have to make those two affordable. On Mallory, uh, there, there's gonna be fifty-eight units altogether. Under state law, can you scroll down, please, James? Under state law, go more down, please, further, further. Stop right there, thank you. Under state law, the developer would be able to do fifty-eight units, five very low income and five moderate income, forty-eight market rate and bungalows can be knocked down and rebuilt and the sizes can be larger, any size they want. And the, they could go potentially up to, definitely up to three, but potentially up to four stories. Now, under the settlement, they would, um... stories. Now, under the settlement, they would, they would still only have fifty-eight net at the end, but it's only twenty-three additional units, because the twenty-five bungalows are kept the same, and they're, they're just rehabbed. There would be five very low and five moderate income. The tenants, essentially rents are kept the same for all the residents living there until they move out. The really important thing that the community needs to focus on, that is the developers agreeing to do all the new units at five hundred to six hundred square feet, which by definition makes them more affordable. Because if they exercise their rights under state law, they could have them at a thousand square feet, twelve hundred square feet, and that would, by, just by the nature of the units being larger, the rents would be a lot more excessive. And they've also agreed that any additional unit will be a similar design and material, and that the maximum would be two stories. So that's, that's the crux of why, well, this is one part of why the deal is a good deal. Let's go to the next one. Let's go to, scroll down, James, please, to Montgomery. So under Montgomery, under state law, they can do thirteen market rate and do one low income and one moderate income. And they have agreed to do twelve moderate income and three low income, so it's a hundred percent affordable. Can we go down, please? On five one Ojai, they're doing one moderate, two low, two very low, and that's similar to what they would have under state law. And then scroll down, please. So now we get to the final count. So final count, all in all, with the twenty-five and the ten, you will have ninety-eight units, sixty-three new units, thirty-one total affordable under the settlement, eighteen moderate, six low, seven very low. And we've talked about the twenty-five bungalows over and over again, landmark application, preserve oak trees, all of that. Now, let's focus on what under state law they could get come January 1st. They could get ninety-eight total units, seventeen, only seventeen compared to thirty-one would be total affordable. But, you know, that's kind of a misnomer, because on top of that seventeen, they could build the twenty-five at Mallory in a way that they're a thousand square feet, and you don't realize that affordable rents that you're gonna get, because now they're committing to keep them at five, or have all of their units be at five hundred to six hundred units. And so they would have eighty-one market rate, and they could replace the affordability of the bungalows. And they would have full control over size, design, character, how many stories there would be. So I hope that helps explain the deal again.
Thank you, Sunny.
What I want to recommend, I see people taking screenshots. The city can provide these charts on the website, and I think already plans to, and I regret that we didn't provide this, you know, as a handout. I don't know if it's too late, if they want to take it home, but you, you know, provided on the web, on the city website in a way where people can, can print it out. You know, so they can, I guess I myself have sat here and I stare at these charts, and all of a sudden, it makes more and more sense. You know, I'm someone that has to look at it for a long time. So...
We'll certainly make it available on the website. It's public now with the provision on Zoom. And staff, I assume, could click print on a whole bunch of paper copies.
Yeah, all, all meeting materials after the start of the meeting will be included in the public comments that are posted on the public comment site. If staff wishes to provide it at another location on the city website, week may, but right now it'll be included in the public comments.
Thank you, Weston.
Tomorrow, I might add, tomorrow.
So my understanding...
We have some questions, but Councilmember Whitman, you want to go?
My understanding is that we've got people who have shown up on Zoom.
Yes.
Holding to comment. We should get those as soon as...
Okay. And then we'll have ideally time, some time for questions. Okay, Zoom?
We do have one raised hand since we spoke about that on Zoom. Natania and Dara P. just raised a hand. Natania, one moment, please. James Renger, I do not have access to promote them. Stand by, everyone. Just a moment here. James, could you please promote me to host? There we go. Thank you. Thanks for waiting, everybody. Natania, you have the floor? Natania, you may unmute. Last call, Natania, and we'll move on. Okay, there you are.
Okay, I think I did. Sorry about that. I'm just trying to navigate technology. My question was, I'm a tenant at cottages among the flowers, and I understand under the new proposed settlement, tenants would be promised an offer of the same rent amount if we were asked to leave so that they could renovate our units. Right now, I'm living in a two-bedroom cottage with my eleven-year-old son, and my concern is that we would be offered a five-hundred or six-hundred-foot studio at the same rental price. That would, of course, not work for us. So I, I thought I remembered in previous proposed agreements, it was more of a comparable unit. If we were in a two-bedroom, then we would be offered a two-bedroom. If a two-bedroom was not available, we would be offered, I don't remember, a dollar amount to move or something like that. So that was one question that I had.
It is comparable units. The same language is used in this settlement agreement.
Okay. And does, does that wording mean a similar floor plan, or is it correct that we could be offered a studio at the same price?
It's defined to tie to state law, and it's defined as equivalent size means that the replacement units contain at least the same total number of bedrooms as the units being replaced. So a two-bedroom would be a two-bedroom, a three-bedroom a three-bedroom.
Okay, great. And then I, I do agree with the comments made that it would be helpful to have time to look over all of the new details. And again, I think the public and residents, of course, just all want to understand the changes. And I think the environmental impact is important to me personally. And I know it's been said in the past how special this place is, and we, we want to keep it special, even if the buildings are going to change and things like that. Natural beauty and little pockets of Ojai that are like this is what makes Ojai so special and, and not the urban sprawl that we see. So I think understanding the details of this proposal would be really helpful.
Thank you, Natania.
Thank you.
Next, we have Dara P. Dara, you have the floor?
Hi. Okay, am I unmuted? Unmuted? I don't think I am muted?
We can hear you.
Okay, hi. Actually, a similar question. I didn't get really a chance to organize my thoughts about this, and I was a bit confused about how to present comments ahead of time. I also have questions about being a tenant at the cottages and what that entails and what the deal is. I mean, originally, there was kind of a pretty nice package that the landlord had put together, even though it wasn't kind of cleared, or it wasn't, there was a lot of other issues at that time, a couple of years ago. And again, I'm hoping that we even could take even a few days to review all this stuff before you vote on this. That's my comment, including to look at other comments, which I understood that, you know, when this came out, like via the paper, that this was about very old permits that are like, you know, and, you know, when were these permits taken out? I mean, how can even those things be validated at this time? You know, some of it is like from 2007? Is that correct? Is that, is that correct? Some of the permits, they're asking to be approved at this time to move forward?
Thank you. Two thousand and seven, some of the permits come from...
Yeah, the original cottages approval dates back to 2007 and was modified in 2016 by the planning commission.
Those permits are the ones that you will be approving tonight, possibly?
Yes, if the council acts, it would be extending that permit, the 2016 approval for further time.
Yeah, I mean, to me, I mean, I will, I mean, just common sense is, and protocol is that, you know, there's a reason why they didn't get passed, or they didn't get done, or the work didn't get done. And it's not necessarily Ojai's fault, or the tenants, or the land, or, you know, there, it's, that is, more has to do with the organization that wants, that took the permits out. So that should be investigated. I mean, that's, and they expire at a certain point, correct? I mean, that's, I would think. I mean, if I got a permit to do something and it expires, it's like it's done. You have to start over. But nevertheless, I'm glad that you all are coming to some kind of, you know, you know, possibility that some of these dilapidated buildings on the cottages might actually be changed. I mean, this is a long time that they've been sitting there, and that is who you're dealing with. And they've done nothing to improve these homes over a long period of time. And I'm actually been in a plumbing crisis here that is, you know, really does need to be dealt with. So...
Thank you, Dara. Is that it, Weston?
No more raised hands, Mayor.
Okay. We do have some questions from the residents or the council. You all right with taking questions?
Sure.
Okay. Any questions out there? Anita, then?
I'm concerned that the current tenants, that the developers could say to a tenant, I'm gonna, I'm gonna redo your house, so you have to move out, and we will send you to this other location where they, they now have another unit that's less desirable, less attractive, perhaps they would be less happy there. And they could do that repeatedly with one tenant after another, even before they chose of their own volition to leave. So systematically, this could happen. They could possibly, I'm just wondering, if they could do that to all the tenants, they could build this other new development, which we didn't even, I didn't even know about until tonight, and then displace all of them over there, make the other ones really nice, like Montecito quality nice, and you would have the upper end, the above moderate income people living there in those absolutely adorable... And the other thing is the Mallory, the cottages amongst the flowers should have historic preservation. There was a study done sometime in the sixties, I don't remember exactly when, 2006, and they said that these should have historic preservation status. That should be a part of, a requirement for both of them. Thank you so much for your time and your hard work.
Thank you, Anita. Carolyn?
The question that I have is relating to this new state law that's going to take place on the first of the year. Sounded to me like anybody could come in and buy land or own land and build three-story whatevers, as long as there was a certain amount of low income or moderate income involved with it. But the state is trying to make more affordable housing, and they're not having too many rules about how it can be done, taking away the power from the local people. Is that what, is that what was said?
Yes.
So the land across from the meadows or the high school, that big piece of land out there, somebody could just build a bunch of four-story apartments and without much that we could say about it? Is that correct?
Yes, there's a risk of it subject to the density provisions at issue. But yeah, under current, under today's state law, three or four stories is possible for a development project if they provide enough affordable housing in, in the right configuration to meet that state protection. The new law we're talking about allows for double the base density come January 1st if a project has fifteen percent very low income and fifteen percent moderate income. Right now, you can only double the density if the project is a hundred percent affordable. You, the max you can get otherwise is eighty percent of a bonus. So the new law will allow doubling the density if it's only thirty percent affordable. And that's the new law that the staff is concerned about being applied in Montgomery or Mallory, if not otherwise agreed.
Or anywhere in the city, I would think.
Yeah, the risk is elsewhere. The city will have some defenses on, on larger sites or on sites where the density standards aren't met. But yeah, the state law is certainly very pro-housing and allows for these higher standards.
That place right across from the meadows is all soggy. I mean, it's like, anyway, water.
Yeah, and if any project does come forward for the meadows, that detailed evaluation of every aspect of the project will be critical, and that would be done before anything would happen.
Without the state interfering, correct?
Well, the state can interfere to an extent, yes. There's a risk of that.
Okay. Anita Cram, and then Tom Francis? Yeah.
I just wanted to make a quick comment, if I could. Just one, one second. Carolyn, I was just gonna respond to you also, just to say that, for instance, I wanted to point out that Cabrillo, the Affordable Housing Project that we approved on Bryant Street, they took realistically three stories, but seven feet is buried, right? But they could have gone to five or six by law, by right, and they didn't. So that's the kinds of things that we're working with here. You know, there are by right, by state law, and there's nothing that we can really do about it without risking an incredible lawsuit that we would lose, because we can't override state law. And the state has declared a housing crisis and has passed innumerable laws over the last three years, five years, to deal with that. And so that's the situation that we find ourselves in. I mean, that is a constraint that this council has to live with. So you negotiate in the best way you possibly can, and you bring in people that know housing laws inside and out so that you can horse trade, right? You know what you can give, and you know what you want. And so that's why we actually got, you know, this deal, which honestly is, is an amazing deal, because we knew how, we had people that knew how to horse trade. Exactly. And, and, you know, we're two weeks away from that, basically.
Well, but there's one other, there is one other issue, and that is that if we exceed all of our RENA numbers, then we are in a much better position to talk to a developer who comes in with a project with, you know, big demands, and we can say, you know, we've, you know, it's, it's not a magic bullet that puts an end to the project, but it puts us in an exponentially stronger position to protect the character of the city.
That's correct. SB 30, if I could jump in. That's correct. We don't eliminate all of the state's housing laws, having met our RENA, but having met our RENA knocks out a good portion of SB 35 and a good portion of the laws that allow for irresponsible development. We are still, of course, part of the density bonus laws and certain others, but it certainly gives the city more tools than we have now, not yet having met our RENA, if we meet our RENA as is proposed.
Yeah, that's exactly what I was...
And just as an example for the, for the meadows, that's zoned one acre, by having achieved our RENA numbers, there is nothing that would force us to change that zoning from one acre. If we had not met RENA numbers, at least with that potential developer who, you know, applied prior to our achieving housing element approval, we would potentially be, have our zoning basically wiped out and any, any extreme number of units that would potentially be going in at the meadows.
Mayor, could I, just really briefly, I wanted to let people know that Lucas has this sheet that was up on the, the monitors, if you would like to...
If you would like to actually have a hard copy of the numbers, please do come up and grab one. So I think just really to crystallize this is that this particular project covers our RENA numbers, which protects us from sort of outward, sort of, just completely development that's not community-friendly at all. And that's also really important to know. It's not necessarily specific to the places, but it's specific to the process.
And just a reminder, that chart will be online. Anita?
So I'm very familiar with the meadow and the property across from it. I volunteered for the land conservancy for almost twenty years. I would far rather see the property across from the meadow developed than destroying the wildlife corridor that exists at the cottages and Mallory Way. So my question to you is, why did you give up the cottages in this? And why did you give up the wildlife considerations in this? That's for every one of you, that's what I want to hear from you. Why did you give that up for this deal? Why did you give up the more important historic landmark of the cottages for, you know, a candy in the sky of historic for the Mallory Way, when the cottages are the real historic jewel? And why did you give up the wildlife? I've, I've seen birds in there that the books don't even say "come here." So that's my question. Why did you give up all of that in this agreement?
Thank you, Anita. Counsel, do you want to address that?
The cottages among the flowers are the ones that have had the first phase sequoia analysis for historic resources back in two thousand and six by the San Buena Ventura Research Associates, or whatever they're called, that said that these should be historic landmarks. They have significant features to them. The proposed development project would destroy those features. And why was all that given up? These are jewels. These are cottages among the flowers. This is an iconic, you know, Ojai jewel in the heart of the city. Why was that given up in this? And why was the wildlife given up in this? In lieu of, oh, we're saving the Mallory Way bungalows. You know, I would far rather see that. I'm a nat, I'm a certified California naturalist, biological scientist, zoologist for many years. I understand these issues quite well. I would far rather see that property across from the meadow built on, because that is not a wildlife corridor. That is not. The meadow is. But there's nothing special about that land as far as historic, sequoia, nothing special about that land. Fill it in, if that's what you gotta do with building, but save what's important in the city of Ojai when it comes to wildlife, when it comes to historic resources. So I don't understand this at all. And like I said, I haven't had a chance to absorb it, so I think it would be very, you know, a bad decision to agree to this tonight when none of the community has been able to look at it. You can't, in a meeting like this, understand this project. So I'm very disappointed in city council, very disappointed. I know you've worked hard. I appreciate that. I know you've made progress. I appreciate that. But I think you've given up the jewels in this and let the, you know, little bubbly things out there be the takeover of it.
Counsel?
The only thing I would say about that is that each property had its own set of land use considerations and sorting through what makes more sense from a legal standpoint has a lot of layers involved that were taken into consideration very, very carefully with the set of land use entitlements in place and issues that needed to be kind of looked at carefully. And the bungalows or Mallory and cottages have different underlying land use issues that were being considered. I can't say much beyond that because of the threat of litigation until we have all of our settlements executed. But maybe if we do have our settlements executed at some point, I can get your phone number from you and call.
You're giving up the goods. You're giving up the goods in this. You're giving up some very, very important parts of the city in this.
Matt?
I would also add that staff would have no objection to a future landmark request for the cottages. It hadn't been discussed as part of the current deal, given certain legal realities, but we would not object to that coming forward. I'm still speaking, ma'am.
Okay.
We would not object to that coming forward for consideration. And I would, the developers in the audience, I'd invite them to consider, perhaps, considering that for the cottages as part of this. But it's not, it's not part of the deal as negotiated.
Okay.
Next speaker.
Tom?
Can I say something?
Okay, you want to go after Tom, or?
Could I respond to Anita? Anita, and anyone else, I believe everyone in this room is very concerned about the wildlife corridor. We are preserving that, that land, that's preserved. And, and, and you, and the, what happens at the two sites is intimately connected. By spreading out development in one site, I think that helps the cottages. I'm, I've spoken with Scott and other tenants. I'm well aware of all the wildlife in that area that's coming down from the mountains. So we're gonna do what we can, and I think I just heard our city attorney, I mean, maybe we can discuss this after all the speakers are done. Maybe we can discuss and get a little more clarity on what's possible and get some clarity on what, what we're agreeing to tonight, and then the possibilities in the future as we go through process. I think we're gonna address that next.
Okay, but you don't have environmental experts as part of this panel who have looked at this, Souza. And, you know, I just think that approving it tonight is a huge mistake, a huge mistake. And, you know, if you don't let the community look at this, if you don't let us consider especially the sequoia parts of this, because that has been completely disregarded in this agreement. I have not heard it mentioned at all. And sequoia includes historical resources. It includes biological resources, you know, that, and we're Ojai. This is not expected of you. Like I said, I know you put a lot of work in, and I do appreciate that. And I appreciate that you've made progress, but I think you've given up way too much in it, way too much.
Thank you, Anita.
If I can just say, on cottages, there has been sequel compliance, because this, essentially, there was sequel review, and so all of that is out there. On the other applications also, we have agreed that there's gonna be a planning commission hearing. As I said, there will be an opportunity for the members of the public to attend those public hearings and comment on all of them.
Well, we need to see those sequel historic. You need to show us those to us. We need to see this before you approve it, because you're just giving us something that we really don't have a clue. Yeah, you've put on presentations, and we appreciate that, and it gives us a kernel of understanding, but we need to see this before you approve it.
Thank you, Anita. Next, Paul?
Because I keep hearing about the multi-story building that can be built on Mallory Way. So if Mallory Way and the cottages are awarded all the protections that they deserve, historic, environmental, and everything, wouldn't that put a stop to, what is it, SB thirty-five or something? Whatever it's called, which permits that monstrosity building?
That's been the objective of the council, and getting the applicant to agree to apply for a landmark, so that would preserve that, and you would keep the bungalows the way they are, and you don't get that.
What about the cottages? Because they are the real landmarks. I, I am aware of the way it's written. It says that it's the cottages in the state they are now that they can be awarded that status. But if they're changed, if they're renovated, if they are totally, you know, what's it called? Remodeled, yes, yeah. Would they deserve it then? Would they even go close? And it would be too late then, anyway.
The cottages are not, landmark preservation of the cottages is not part of the settlement agreement. That's before the council tonight. I understand Mr. Summers was saying that maybe that's something we can ask the developer, but, I mean, I honestly don't know if the developer would do that because of the points you're making. So I understand what you're saying. We can ask, but that would require them to change their plans for the cottages if they did that, because your point is correct.
Yeah, so is it only the developer who can request that landmark designation, or can the city start something like that, start the process? Because if the city can start a process for Mallory and the cottages, then that could totally throw SB thirty-five out of the window as an option, because it wouldn't be able to be done.
If you, if the council were to do that, you would not have a settlement agreement. I understand the request. We would be back to square one where the developer, January first, can file their applications. And Montgomery would be thirteen market rate units, one, two affordable. Mallory would be fifty-eight units with none of the concessions they've made. So I understand the point you're trying to make, but I want to be clear, there would not be a settlement agreement. That's ultimately the council's discretion, but as someone that knows what could happen in this community and hearing the comments I'm hearing, I don't know if that would be in the best interest of the community, but ultimately, that's what would happen if there was, if we were trying to change the deal to all of a sudden advise the council to file for a landmarking of the cottages. Now, I think what Mr. Summers was saying was, he was encouraging the developer to think about it on his own. That's only ten units, so it's a small, smaller development that maybe if there's a settlement, maybe if there's no challenge, maybe if there is a path forward to responsible community development, maybe the developer would get excited and come to the table and say, okay, let's relook at bungalows. But I want to be clear, under this settlement agreement, there's nothing that mandates for them to agree to landmark it. But again, we don't know in the hopes of having finality, having responsible development. The developer has told at least us at the staff level that they want to hear the community's concerns, and they want it, one of the reasons they came, they said, "We don't want to be in this adversarial position where we can go by state law and do what we want to do and have another rough situation like we did and have a lawsuit and get attorney's fees against the city, then that only, you know, creates more bad blood." They have communicated that the true intent is to try to come and do a development. That's why they were open to doing this. So with that, if there's a step forward where the settlement agreement is approved, I think Mr. Summers is saying, maybe we can go back to them and say, "Here's a step forward. Can you please think about cottages as well?" I think that's what you were suggesting, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah. Could, could, could we have clarity on what happens with the cottages? It's gonna go before the planning commission, correct? Not the cottage, just the bungalows. Okay.
The bungalows and Montgomery and Five Ten East Ojai would come to the planning commission for review of the final site plan. Confirmation that it meets the terms of what the developer is required to apply for under the settlement. And so what would be on the table would be final design aspects, making sure that it meets the requirements, but not wholesale changing the unit counts. The city would be agreeing to the unit counts. And just to be clear, if the city, you know, city always retains full discretion. So if the city chose to deny those unit counts in the future, then they'd come in with the state law defaults.
Okay, thank you.
So if I may just ask this question, I'm curious. If the city chooses, if it has the choice to say, "Okay, we want to go forward with protecting landmark status, environment, and all that," does the city have that option? And would that option, if the city pursued it, block SB thirty-five?
Well, I don't, we don't have an SB thirty-five application, so I'm a little confused. Maybe you're saying, would it block the approval, a future?
Would those protections afford protection against SB thirty-five building a monstrosity in the city of Ojai?
Those, those things should have been done before the application was filed. The landmarking should have been, you have an application before you right now. That's the issue. So if, if there is another site that the residents want to protect as a historic site, and there's no application on it, I encourage you, please bring it to the city council. This is the time to go comb through your community, find your jewels, understand, you know, what you want to protect, allow the council to proactively create, you know, the protections that the community wants. But the way these housing laws came down, it all happened so fast, maybe there was not enough time to create this protection for the bungalows and the cottages. I think it's a wonderful concession on the developer's part, so at least one of these projects can now be saved and be landmarked. But I know I'm not, I'm answering your question, saying, yes, thank you.
I agree. It is a very nice offer from the developer. I'm just curious as to what the options are and, you know, if it's too late, or if it's not too late.
So I think what he's asking is that because the application is in, the city doesn't have the power at this point, because preservation, historic preservation, is a way that cities have traditionally stopped development. It's one of the strategies that are used, you know, and so for that reason, that was kind of, that door was closed in many of the ways that the state closed doors. There is four or five strategies that cities have used over the years to stop affordable development, affordable development, housing, whatever, call it whatever you want. Planning and city councils have an amount, had an immense amount of discretion to stop these kinds of things with various, these historic preservation, upzoning. I mean, there's five or six ways that you can do it, and the cities used to do it, which is why that was put, that was halted. You know, that, that sort of avenue's not open if the application is in. You know, it's just, it's just, it has to do with how land use and housing has moved forward or not in the last twenty years, right? Because towns didn't want housing built, right? They didn't want to afford, they didn't want housing built because they like their, they like the community as it is, right? So, I mean, it's this balancing act that, what are you gonna do? And so the state finally said, you know, "We're gonna do these things," and they did them.
Okay, I see.
Yeah, so I mean, that's, that's kind of just the way it is.
Thank you, Paul. Tom?
Thank you all so much for all the work you're putting in tonight and the extra effort you're putting in now to listen to the community. It's really, it really helps with the sting of being excluded from the process and basically most of this process being done in a black box. And then you come out and open the box and say, "Here's what's in the box." All right, so it's hard on us. And it's hard on you guys, too. So I apologize that it's hard on you. So I think my biggest question is, so there's this, this deadline, this deadline, December thirty-first. And then the next day, you know, we're dead, right? Is that really real? Couldn't the developer, if they wanted to, they don't have to, but if they wanted to, couldn't they extend this process a month? In other words, extend the existing rules that were working under today to January thirty-first, if they want to?
We've tried. We genuinely tried to have a longer process. And I think, I'll be very candid with you, I think there is a lack of trust from all sides. The city doesn't trust the developer. The developer doesn't trust the city. The developer doesn't. Exactly. Simply, Ojai doesn't trust the developer. So I think because of that essential lack of trust between everybody, there's been a lack of willingness to have a longer process, but we have tried. I promise you, we tried.
I think we need to try harder, because what I'm hearing from most of the people tonight is that we're really happy that there's all this work that's been done. And the big missing component is you guys are like, you get two hours to accept or to not, you know. not, you know, support or not this project. That is not a community process, and I think that there should be more pressure by the council on the developer to have a process that doesn't last two or three hours. It's too much. It's five projects or four or whatever it is now, okay, to be decided in two hours. It's, you're asking too much of the community. And so I would appreciate it if city staff could potentially ask, I think there's a representative of the developer here, perhaps the developer could get a phone call tonight, now, and be asked that question again after hearing, because I'm hoping the developer's watching this meeting, so maybe after hearing all this from all these people, we're all saying pretty much the same thing, too quick, right? We're really appreciative, but too quick. Maybe it's time to call the developer and ask, or I don't know how many decision makers there are, maybe there's two, I don't know. So could that, could that happen?
The developers' council is present in the room. I know they're listening and they're going to consider it more than one moment and maybe consult with our client and report back shortly with the answer on that one.
Pretty.
But I will note that the process is certainly quick, but it has taken some time to work through the options and to negotiate the very best deal that staff thinks we can negotiate, given the realities and given the goals set forth by the council. So we'll ask the developer to ask for some additional time and give them a minute or two to respond.
Okay.
And questions noted, thank you.
Okay. So perhaps one negotiating point since, you know, I've done house restoration, I've done a lot of homes that are in the 1920s era, similar era to the cottages, and they are the jewels of all those buildings, much more so than Mallory, which are not near as historically significant or architecturally correct. And so perhaps the city could make some sort of an offer to the developer, just an idea to pay for that. Maybe, maybe there's the will in the community to pay for, pay the developer to leave those alone instead of remodeling them, which then pretty much eliminates their, a substantial portion of their historical significance. So it's just an idea. And then my last question is, there was a mention of the design review for cottages would go to the planning commission. I think considering that this is so contentious and many people in the community, some of the people that are here tonight worked very hard on the elections to get people on the council, I would really respectfully request that the design considerations go to the council, to the people that are elected by the voters, not to the planning commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Anyone else? Anita?
Yeah, I'll note on that last point that the proposal would bring the, yeah, at some point, we'll have to have the council provide their direction. The proposal does provide for the modified Mallory project to come to the council for that design discussion, so that would occur. The other two would be Montgomery and 510 East Ojai presently proposed for planning commission review. That's the present proposal, so council for the modified project.
I have a quick question.
Just one second. So any more, any new people who haven't asked a question?
No.
Okay. And council, are you okay with Anita asking one more question?
I mean, no, this isn't like.
Well, things keep getting brought up that we weren't aware of, so you know, it's, it's hard when you don't have the information and then more things are revealed as we go along. So it's, I just would want to say that both of those old buildings are Ojai jewels, they are legacies to Ojai. I would like to ask us to appeal to this developer. If he wants to leave a legacy to his children, he can name those the Becker Legacy, whatever you want to call it. I think we should postpone this until December 30th, and we should ask that these places become historic, historic preservation. Years and years and years have gone by and they have not become, gone on the historic preservation status. I don't know why that is, but there has been probably decades and it has not happened. Thank you all for your time. Please postpone this until December 30th. You'll have time to talk with him. You'll have to time for us to consider this, which we really need. And thank you so much. I know it's not easy and you guys are looking really tired, but thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Anita. We better move on to discussion.
Can I make just a?
Okay, thank you.
I just wanted to, yeah, I wanted to clarify with Matt. Isn't any decision of the planning commission appealable to the city council?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, so, I'm sorry, so any decision of the planning commission is appealable to the city council? So to, it doesn't necessarily, it doesn't need to come to us first. It would in fact make more sense for it to go to them who are, have eyes on this. And then if they want to appeal it, or if the city council wants to take it under advisement, it is within our rights to do so. Anybody sitting in the audience can make an appeal on a planning commission decision and it will come in front of the council. I just wanted to clear that up.
Absolutely, under the city's code.
We have one, okay, quick question.
The affordable thing is being thrown around a lot, and my understanding is that we're talking about the 20 cottages in Mallory Way, the eight in the cottages among the flowers, that's 28 affordable, very low income at this point. What are we trading those out for in return for how many very affordable units? You used the word affordable when you were saying that that's why we're not allowing development. That's never been the case with this valley, and I've lived here a long time.
I'm sorry, what did I say?
You were saying that one of the reasons nothing gets done with affordable housing development is because we haven't wanted that here. That's not been the case. It's about affordable.
No, I said that tradition, okay, I'm not going to argue, but I said traditionally people, that towns have not wanted to build housing. That's my, that's my point. No, 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 it's across the board. It's, that's why California has declared a housing crisis. It's not here. It's, I mean, it may or may not be here, that's not the discussion, but it is statewide.
I see. Yeah, I didn't mean to pick you out personally.
No, no, it's okay. And why not?
It made it sound like Ojai was against, but we have been a sustainable development council.
Yeah, 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 for sure, for sure, yeah.
And I would argue that if we upheld our illegal immigration legislation, we wouldn't have a housing crisis.
Absolutely, absolutely.
We do have one comment on Zoom, Weston? Okay, last comment on Zoom, right?
Teal Rowe. We'll give you the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Weston. Can you hear me?
Yes, please proceed.
All right. I'm with Paul and to recognize, and I have this comment way back in history about that Wind River of that area. It's a very special feed into the city of Ojai. And my big question is about, I'm wondering how did 510, how did the Miller property get folded into this deal? And I'm very concerned about the zoning. Did the zoning change in order to get this, this property into the deal? And if so, could you just answer that? And then the other thing is about that property and SEQA laws around that property. Historically, wasn't that like a big oil spill area? Jim Miller's property across from Sea Fresh? And my other question is about the RENA numbers. Everybody's so concerned about the RENA numbers to build 68 units to get, what does Ojai need, five more RENA numbers after Cabrillo's been built? I mean, and I'm with everybody in the community that's in that room as maybe a ratio of people that aren't in that room and don't even know this meeting's taking place. It's a lot of information, it's a lot in front of our face. So wonder how did 510 get folded into the deal? And wonder, was the zoning changed in order to do that?
Briefly, Madam Mayor, 510 was added into this conversation as it had been in the development agreement conversation at one point, two years ago now, then was excluded. They bought the site with an idea to developing housing, hence they put it back in with the five proposed affordable units. No zone changes inherent in any of this. All of this is proposed under existing zoning, variety of zoning standards, but all existing zoning, no change in zoning is proposed. And the RENA left over after Cabrillo is more than five units. It's a total of 35 units that still have to be provided after the Cabrillo project. And this project in total provides all of the remaining RENA in each of the income categories. With that, I'll turn it to Ms. Sultani.
I just wanted to say that Ms. Collins, who's the attorney that represents the developer, just stepped, stepped to here to tell me that her phone is dead, otherwise she could have texted her clients to see if they're willing to consider filing an application for the bungalows to landmark those as well. She expressed, not bungalows, cottages. She expressed that under the current approval, it's, the cottages are not being demolished, they're just being upgraded and rehabilitated with upgrades. And that she, she would ask her clients if they're willing to do that and that the objective all along of her clients has been to keep the integrity and any historic value of the cottages. The reason we've been focusing on Mallory and the bungalows is because those ones were planned to be knocked down and that's why they needed to be saved. So she reminded me of that and someone asked, why are you focusing on the bungalows? And that was a great reminder. And although she cannot commit to her clients agreeing to file the landmark application on the bungalows, she expressed that it has been the intention of her clients all along to preserve the historic nature of the cottages. So I thought that was a bit of good news. And if she gets approval from her clients tomorrow before we sign the settlement agreement, perhaps we could add that in. I'm not going to make it a condition tonight. I expressly asked the council to express, to show their good faith also in these negotiations, approve the settlement agreement, but I'm putting on the record that that was expressed to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Beth. You're welcome to use my phone if you want. Okay, we will move on to discussion. Who would like to begin? Let's move on to discussion. Okay, who would like to begin to discuss? Okay. Councilmember Whitman? Public comment is closed. Councilmember Whitman?
Yeah, so I do want to thank the Ojai residents who drafted the referendum and those who gathered the signatures and those who signed it. Over 600 people who signed it, and I think they believe that we could do a better deal than the deal that was presented or the deal that had been approved back in August of 2022. We were fortunate enough to bring in Sunny Sultani to assist us with what we could and could not reasonably do from a housing perspective. And, you know, and particularly with a whole series of builders remedy applications, which were potentially going to be unpalatable. And, and I think until a week ago, a week or so ago, I'm a little blurry on dates with, with everything that's gone on for city council over the last three weeks or so. But, you know, I think we were looking at not extending these permits and going into potentially years of litigation that we, that would result in an uncertain future for Ojai. So we could fight the components of this project, but we would have no assurance that the developer wasn't going to get what they asked for in the applications. I think we, the five of us, have worked very hard to understand the current housing law and what our expected outcome would be. What we are considering tonight is not necessarily our, you know, best fantasy outcome, and I think the developer would probably say the same thing to us. But one of the things that we're achieving tonight potentially is certainty that we would not otherwise have. I would much rather have us control our future than leave it up to a judge. And I'm somebody who deals with judges all the time, and they're fallible. And, and the judges are, from everything that I've learned, lean towards the view of California housing that HCD has. There's exceptions to that. And I've talked at great length with Ms. Sultani about areas where we had strong arguments and areas where the developer has strong arguments. And, and there's no clear winner on those. We would be in the stronger position on some issues, the developer would be in the stronger issue on other issues. I hope people know enough about me that it would not be my first inclination to be entering into an agreement which had a substantial addition of market rate housing. But I have to look at what potentially significantly worse outcome we could be looking at. I will say that a big turning point for me in how I viewed this project was a discussion with Sunny about whether it was conceivable to protect and preserve the Mallory Way bungalows, because it was, you know, very difficult for me to conceive of scraping those and then that whole property turning into a condo development, which I think would be sad for most of the community. So it was not that long ago that we were told that the developer was very interested in the idea of protecting those units and keeping them the way that they were. And then, you know, the developer also came back with approval of the idea that we would be, the units that would be built there in addition to the ones that are being protected would be not tiny, but smallish. And that would create affordability, you know, moving forward. I very recently, just within the last couple of days, was expressing my concern about, you know, after having offered to protect the bungalows, you know, how are we going to extend that long term? And was very pleased to hear that the developer came back and was interested in landmarking the properties. So the other thing I'll say is that it, since I've been involved in housing in Ojai, I have really pushed the idea that we need to protect our existing affordable housing stock if we're going to retain affordability. And this project doesn't, does that to an, really a surprising extent in my estimation. So, you know, I feel, I feel kind of strange being up here promoting for the developer. So, you know, I feel, I feel kind of strange being up here promoting for the developer, but I actually have. I think that while I'm thanking people like Craig Walker, who I think wrote on every single hearing related to Mallory, that we should be looking at historic preservation. I also think we have to give some credit to the developer who is doing some really good things for the community. So, I mean, I've been very impressed, impressed for this. I've had a lot of sleepless nights over this project. I also, I guess I'd say that the five of us did a good job with the Brown Act because the community's really surprised. So, I, I'll make a motion that, well, I'm going to, I'm going to say one more thing. And that is that, you know, I thank the staff for the hard work that they did in bringing together this agreement. But I also have to say that I have a tremendous amount of confidence in Sunny Sultani and rely extensively on her telling me that this is a deal that we should approve. I know that she is very capable of telling us, fight the hell out of this one because you're going to win. And she's not telling us we're going to lose, but she's going to tell us it's, you know, she's telling us it's going to be a dogfight. And I think putting all of this behind for the community, providing extensive affordable housing benefits for the community and protecting those 25 units is, you know, is, it's, it's a real big win. So, I'm going to make a motion that, that we approve the settlement agreement.
And if I may, as part of the motion, we also-
We'll all second it.
We're all seconding.
One person can second it.
No, I know, we're kidding.
And as part of the motion, we also would need the council to adopt the resolution approving the time extension for the cottages, subject to-
The settlement agreement being executed by the developer.
Subject to the settlement agreement.
What you guys said, I add to my motion.
Okay. All right, we have a, we have a motion, we have a second.
Motion Whitman, second rule. I heard it previously as a three-part. One would be to approve-
I'm sorry, I just want to clarify the motion. The motion is to, the motion is to approve the settlement agreement and the resolution, as Mr. Summers stated it. But the resolution's approval is subject to the settlement agreement actually being executed by the developer. I think that's a critical part of it. If it's not, that approval is revoked and we will have another hearing to pass a resolution of denial. I think that is a very important part of the motion, sorry.
Agreed.
Can I ask a quick question? What does it mean when you say execute the settlement? What is that?
We have a settlement agreement that has been drafted. The devil, as the community says, is in the details. We have a draft that they've looked at, we've looked at, we've all blessed. But after, it has to be first approved by the council before the developer signs it. So, I just want to make sure that settlement agreement gets signed by the developer before the cottages are considered approved.
Okay, so it's the execution of the settlement agreement after we approve it? Okay, thank you.
Correct. And the settlement agreement will be consistent with the terms as discussed tonight and as made available on the Zoom screen.
And, and the copies of the settlement agreement will be available for public inspection, hopefully sometime tomorrow. And as I've offered, I will be available to answer any questions any members of the public have about it.
Thank you, Sunny. Okay, we have a, a motion, we have a second final comments. Councilmember Lang?
If I, if I could just, I just, thank you. I just want to make a few comments because I, I heard everyone who asked for more time. And, and I want you to know that we're not ignoring your requests for more time. That we, we would all love to have more time. I know that this seems fast to you, but this is a long, this has been a long process that we've been going through and that the developer has been going through with this council, with the previous council. And Sunny Sultani and Matt, our, our city attorney, have, have really worked so hard. Sunny came in like a ray of sunshine and at a time when we were facing litigation, when we were, you know, in the, in the process of, of losing our city manager. And she came and she worked what I think is a miracle. One thing that I, that hasn't been mentioned here that I just wanted to state is that with this development, the developers could have sold this property. This could be developed by someone who's outside of a big corporation where we have no, where, where the developer themselves don't have an interest in what happens to this community. But the developer is here in this community and is showing that, that they have, that they really care about the community and that they want to preserve the look and the feel of this community. And I know that that might not, some of you might not feel that way, but in going through the negotiations, that was something that I, that I found to be, that I really appreciated. And, and so, and so, yeah, so I think this is, as Councilmember Whitman said, you know, this isn't our dream agreement, this isn't the developer's dream agreement, but it protects the, the most important thing is that it protects every single person who lives in the, in the cottages and the bungalows. And not only that, our rent stabilization ordinance has provisions for renovations and, and this, that, they go above and beyond what our own ordinance says in terms of protecting the amount that our renters are paying. So, that to me is the most important piece of this. And we get to preserve the walking trail. There are lots of things that, that really, that really work. And so, I'm hopeful that within time, that everyone who is having a lot of emotions about this, and rightly so, that will all be able to talk about this and, and, and find a way to, to move, to move forward and, and make the most of this.
Mayor Protem?
I'm in, in agreement with the comments made by my two colleagues so far. I, I just want to address something that's not part of the agreement, but that's important. At previous hearings, the tenants came to the podium and did complain about the lack of repairs and plumbing and things. So, there are standards, right? If, 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 if your home, if your cottage is in disarray and in need of repair, I believe you can take that to the city or, or, I don't know, maybe you can address that. So, that's, that's a part. Those are issues that would just be normal rental agreement type issues that should be addressed. We don't have to wait for renovation to take care of plumbing, is what I'm trying to say.
Right.
For remodeling, for remodeling, to take care of issues like plumbing. So.
Or heat, I don't have heat.
Or heat or whatever. There are, there are, there are state laws, right?
Right. Habitability laws require certain requirements to be met. And those are enforceable through the small claims courts or through code enforcement, depending on the details of the situation. I'd suggest any of those complaints to be filed with the Development Department and Code Enforcement. And if not already done, a written request to the landlord. For example, if there's no heat, a written, a written letter to the landlord copying the city that says I have no heat, make sure they're aware of it.
Quiet, let's stay quiet, please. Any other, Mayor Protem?
Any other issues like that, that if they're not addressed tonight, bring them, you know, bring them to, to the attention of the city staff and city council. You can ask that your letter be copied to all of us. And it can, my understanding is that it'll go to the, right-
The city doesn't, it, the city's not a court, so we don't enforce-
Yeah.
-provisions of a lease. State law allows that to be enforced through the habitability system and small claims court. However, the city does enforce certain code enforcement requirements. So, depending on the problem, it's enforceable through the courts or it's enforceable through code enforcement. So, first step is to make sure the landlord is aware of it in writing.
Ms. Collins, could you help Fran get heat? Okay.
She said to write the landlord.
Okay, write the landlord? All right. And, okay, and Mr. Becker, Mr. Johnkers, if you're listening, could you help Fran get some heat? Anyone else get heat? It's, not all the units, it's cold, it's getting really cold. So, I think that's really important. Mayor Protem, are you finished?
I'm done, yeah.
Okay. Councilmember Rule?
Yeah, I, I also agree. This, this is, this was, I, I know that it was sort of sprung on the citizens, but that's, that in, in real estate negotiations, that's like one of the few things that you're allowed to go into closed session because it's a negotiation. So, just sort of de facto, that's kind of the way real estate negotiations in municipalities happen. And given with this negotiation and the timeframe, there was, there's, there's not movement. Nobody can revisit this right now. So, I think down the road, you know, a potential historic landmarking, all of that is really possible. We've, we've talked a lot and I agree with everyone here. I, I have come to appreciate and I have told Sunny this and Matt, you know, what creative negotiation really looks like and what it requires as far, I mean, you have to have really deep and broad knowledge of the actual topic, you know, it's subject matter expertise. The only thing I want to point out is that I'm so proud that we protected our tenants and that we also, that the developers agreed to give first priority to low-income tenants, current Ojai residents that are at risk of losing their, their homes because of gentrification. So, they go to the top of the priority list. And once again, short of that like pathway that I have walked many, many, many times and that, you know, I, I think that was really so important to me and, and to the people that I've walked it with. The, the protection and the priority for low-income tenants is, is super, super important to me. That is really what I think differentiates Ojai is that we take care of those. And I applaud the developer and Cabrillo for, for finding a way to move forward with that. So, that having been said, this is such a complex process, there's no way to peel back the layers really. I don't even think we've peeled back all the layers, but I am 100% in support of this. And I also agree, is it, you know, if I had my magic wand that is so popular in Ojai, you know, could I wave it? I probably could. But sitting here right now, I am very pleased with what we have and intend to, to vote affirmatively.
Well, first I want to thank Ms. Sultani and Matt. Thank you so much for working so hard on this and Sunny for coming in and jumping on the team. We're really grateful to both of you. Lucas, it's been a long haul, huh? So, thank you for all your work on this. And thank you to Ms. Collins and the developers for working on this agreement with us. And it, you know, it's a compromise. Compromise is, we meet in the middle. It's not perfect either way. It's sort of like a tie in the Super Bowl, which doesn't happen. Everybody walks away like, oh, it's all right. So, I think that's really important to keep in mind. And I'd like to also thank, and thank you for bringing that up, Councilmember Whitman. A thank you to all the people who worked on the referendum, all those 600 people who signed it. That's very significant and it helped get us here. So, I hope you, that's true and, and I want to thank you for that. Of course, there are things that we would like, time. And just going, if Mr. Becker, Mr. Johnkers are listening right now, we would love more time. You know, I can see Ms. Collins. Nope. You know, the trees, and thank you Carolyn for bringing up the trees. The trees, as you know, in Ojai are so important. So, anything you can do to save the trees, help the trees, support the trees. The wildlife corridor, as we've heard several times, super important. We have a mountain lion out there, a few of them. So, anything you can do to help keep that going. And, and as Councilmember Rule and Councilmember Lang mentioned, we are protecting people and that, you know, it's all comes down to people and animals and trees and the environment. So, I think that is, is a really positive thing. Our hands are tied and I do trust our legal council, our hands are tied because of all these new laws that, and so we are depending on you both to help us out there. And also, Councilmember Whitman mentioned the certainty factor and I think at this point that is, is big. You know, I think the community realizes that we don't need any more market rate units. We need housing for a very low, extremely low, acutely low-income household. Someone brought up minimum wage and this, Peggy LaSara brought up, it's a service economy. We need units for people who make minimum wage. So, and I, and I, you know, we will continue to ask for that and recognize that this once again is a compromise. So, I think we spent a lot of time on this and a lot of back and forth. And I think as a council, we worked really well together. It was good teamwork. Hey, thank you. And I, I'm sorry that is such a surprise, you know, it's, it's been a surprise to us too. You know, every day would be different. Like there's a new phone call, a new text, a new piece of information. So, it has been a long, slow and fast process, if that makes sense. So, here we are now and while it's not perfect, it's a compromise and I'm ready to support it.
Yes.
Ready for a roll call?
Ready for roll call. Yeah, the motion has been clarified and understood. Do we need a repeat?
Sure, repeat it. I mean-
Motion by Councilmember Whitman, second by Councilmember Rule. One, to approve the settlement agreement as stated by the city attorney and shown to the public and council in the materials tonight. And two, approve the time extension agreement resolution for cottages among the flowers, subject to the execution of the settlement agreement.
Yes.
Roll call. Councilmember Rule?
Yes.
Mayor Sticks?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Francina?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitman?
Yes.
Councilmember Lang?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you all for being here. We appreciate your input.
Thank you.
Okay.
We have no other business, Madam Mayor?
Okay, all right, we are adjourned. Thank you.